Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the meetings order at 7:36. Welcome to the West Milford Township Board of Education Regular Meeting. It's Monday, October 26, 2015. Please silence or turn up your cell phones and note the exits and locations of the emergency exits. We could just have a meeting, a moment of silence for those staff members and school community members and families that may have lost loved ones recently. We could please stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, The Herald News, The Trends, The Record, Aim West Milford, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney in Cable Division of Warwick, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call please, Mrs. Francisco.
Mr. Babbitt, Mr. Bailey, Mr. Dever.
Here.
Mr. Drew.
Here.
Mr. Foodie.
President.
Mrs. Keppi.
Here.
Ms. O'Brien, Mr. Robbins, Mrs. Schultz.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. We resolved that the board go into executive session at 9:00 PM for approximately 16 minutes for the purpose of discussing personnel, negotiations, and matters of attorney-advocate privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege of confidentiality is no longer applicable. Will that please? Can I make a motion to leave? Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Superintendent's report, Mr. Rashika.
Okay, so before I start talking a lot, I'm going to throw it over to our student, Representative Matthew Ventrelli. Want to give us some information?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Rashika. It's my pleasure this evening to deliver a report of student life for the month of October. As school year is beginning to pick up into its full swing, I am pleased to report that student life at the high school is marked by a passion and involvement so characteristic of West Milford. We, the students, continue to embrace and exemplify the virtues of Highlander pride on a daily basis. The month began with great attendance at back-to-school night, and the evening was run by the administration and faculty and students as part of a Peers as Leaders organization volunteered their time to assist parents who at times lost in elaborate fall ways. The high school was also proud to unveil a series of new banners which illustrate the theme of Highlander pride and now line the halls of the high school. A central theme of the month of October was activism. The high school collectively participated in the Weeks for Peace and Respect and in School Safety Week. Peace Week featured spirited themes such as Purple Day and peace-themed songs that were played over the announcements. Many school organizations, such as PALS, the GSA, Sources of Strength, and the Student Council participated in these weeks through unique activities like peace chalk messages, spontaneous compliment post-it notes, rainbow ribbons, and the distribution of cards that read, "I respect you, I admire you, thank you for making a difference in my life." Students then passed these cards on to a person they were choosing. These Weeks were then capped off by a moving presentation by guest speaker, Dr. Fallon, who spoke about anti-bullying but in a new light. He was extremely charismatic and told stories about bullying through the eyes of multiple personas. He was honestly the best anti-bullying presenter that I had experienced in my time at the high school. With October continued the strong Highlander tradition of homecoming. The game was played against Bergen Field, and although we lost the game, the halftime show featured the crowning of seniors Anthony Santiago and Aaron McCarthy as the homecoming king and queen, along with six underclassmen chosen as the rest of the homecoming corps. The marching band had characteristics successful month. They won Best Band Overall at the Yamaha Cup at MetLife Stadium. They took every award at the runoff competition, including Best Overall Band, and they also won Best Overall Band at the West Orange Competition and won the Mayor's Trophy. They then went to the University of Delaware and competed in a larger circuit, which was a great experience. This past weekend, they got first in their division and second overall at Mount Olive. The junior and senior classes were duly involved in planning for a volleyball tournament fundraiser to take place on November 19th. The other class councils also recently held successful fundraisers. Student Council had a very active month. We ran a T-shirt fundraiser that brought together local businesses within the Highlander community. Sponsors included the Highlander Daily, Karen Weedman of Remax Realtors, TJ Spizza, RGS Tree Service, and Jo Max HealthCom. I would like to thank Don Ray Printing out of Parsippany, who helped provide us with the shirts and gave us a huge discount. We are continuing to research a local cause to donate some of the money to. As we look towards November, events such as the band tattoo, parent-teacher conferences, and the high school blood drive will take place. This concludes my report for October. Have a great evening, everybody.
Thank you, Matt. So I just wanted to piggyback a little bit on all that information that Matt shared with us for Violence Awareness Week and the Week of Respect. All of our schools participated in various activities, some of them from wearing different colors to having tie-dye shirts for peace, which I can relate to, and all these other activities that were very, very positive. And that was throughout the entire school district. One of the pieces that Matt referenced with Dr. Fallon, who came in, is someone that I fortunately had the experience of working with about three times over the past seven years. And he was here now at West Milford. And just so you get an understanding what this is, this is not a presentation of somebody with a doctorate in psychology coming up and preaching or lecturing all about bullying. It's not that at all. He actually goes into at least six or seven characters. He sets up chairs on the stage, and he will go from anybody, from a football player on the football team who's being bullied for obvious reasons, well, not so obvious reasons, but dealing with some of his own conflict, to a student who is even being bullied at home, perhaps his parents are under some type of addiction, and then he comes to school and he has to face all the types of things that happen during the course of a school day, from his peers and his teachers and so on. So that is a very moving program, and I was very happy that he was able to join us. I have to say, too, that one Monday afternoon, I was stopping by the high school to do a rep council meeting, which is held after school, and upon coming up the front steps of the school, I saw all this colored chalk writing, like, you know, it would look like you have young children who used to do those kinds of things in the driveway, and I was a little upset. I said, "What the heck is going on?" Until I stopped and I read the messages, which were quite moving. They were very good messages about respect, the bullying, and all different quotes that were on the sidewalk, on each step, and also on the top. So really, it's been a wonderful experience all across the board, and we continue to move in that direction. I know that currently at McEpin School, they're doing Red Ribbon Week, excuse me, which is, I believe, with the Drug Alliance Group to spread the word about the bad things that happen with drugs. And it's also the Red Ribbons is a door decorating contest that's going on currently.
Yes.
Right? So we made, there we go. Oh, okay. So there you can see some of the artwork that the students are doing to support this cause, and it's really been a very, very positive experience going in the building and seeing the, from, again, from kindergarten on up to high school, grade 12, where all of these things are taking place. So very happy to see that. To attach to that, I also have to say that Mr. Rowe and I have been working, he's the specialist for anti-bullying, and we've been working with our staff members and updating some training, reaching out to some other people for professional development, and truly focusing in on making the process equal across the board. I think one of the things, you know, when I came in here that I noticed right away is that the way certain things were being handled initially were different at each one of the schools. So the goal, the objective right now is to get everybody to do things the same way and to do things the same way that are proper and correct based on all the standards for bullying. So I think we're off in a good direction. Also, I appreciate this information. We are going through the Q-SAC process. We will be going through the process. That's the Quality, Single Accountability, Contortion, and Continuum, I should say. And then what happens with that is they come into the school after we do the following things. Yearly, we have to report on a statement of assurance from multiple topics across the district, which is time-consuming, and it goes anywhere from your buildings and grounds, very thorough, talking about how many sockets are in each room, to, it could be to transportation, and it goes all across the board. But that being said, the other piece of this is the Q-SAC piece, which we call, or the paperwork for that is called DPRs, District Performance Review. And that's in five areas. So initially, we thought we were only going to be observed in one area, but the state has decided that if they're coming in, they want to review all the areas. So the areas, just so you know, are Instruction and Program, Operations, I write them down because I can't always remember, Fiscal Management, Governance, and Personnel. So within each one of these categories, there could be, you know, anywhere from 18 to 22, so questions that you need to not only answer but have the documentation. So Mr. Novak has been busy collecting the documentation for some of the pieces. I've been doing others, Ms. Francisco, in other areas. So we're putting this all together, and it will be completed for a submission for November 15th. Once the state gets that information from us, they will then set up a time to visit the district, and they will go through those DPRs, and they will come probably sit in the Board of Education office, and they will request to see random items, such as lesson plans for English I, your kindergarten K through 2 reading program. What are you using? They want to see examples of assessments that you're using in the classrooms. They want to see scheduling. And then they like to tour the town as well. So they'll go around, they will visit a couple of schools, a couple of different classrooms, see what's going on in the school. So it's a very thorough process, and this is in addition to the Accreditation for Growth, which we did for the high school specifically just last spring. So we are, you know, monitoring everything, trying to do the best that we can, but it is pretty labor-intensive, and certainly, once we have the results of that, we will be able to share that with you. We'll put it up on the website. However, again, at this point, I don't know when they're actually coming in to do that. But again, so Q-SAC will be going on. So at this point, I do have more to say, but I want to give Mr. Novak an opportunity to do his piece, and then I'll just follow up.
I wanted to go back and connect, Tom? Yeah, Tom? I want to connect back to what Mr. Rashika was talking about with Red Ribbon Week and our Week of Respect. For the first time, all West Milford schools are going to be participating tomorrow in what's called Mix It Up at Lunch Day. It is a nationally-recognized holiday, if we can call it that. It's something that the Macman School's been doing for three, four years? Five? Okay. Another component of Macman being named National School of Character was one of these structures that was placed in their application. So we have, with help of Mr. Weedman and the Graphic Arts Department, we were able to create some posters to distribute to all the schools. And over the last two weeks, our social workers and teachers and staff have been coming together, coming up with some great ideas on how to celebrate this day. And initially, what turned out to be, I guess, a good idea, just to kind of get kids go into the lunchroom and sit with somebody else, it turned into a great teaching moment for everyone involved. And, you know, we've been reaching out and getting some feedback from the buildings about the things that they've been, the things they've been training the students for, and we've got everything from processes when students enter the cafeteria to, you know, how they get assigned to a specific table, how they're going to be sitting with a peer that they haven't sat with before, right down to the discussion cards that are going to be at the table to prompt those discussions going further. So, you know, a really, really elaborate plan, a lot of hard work has gone into it, and, you know, we'll be visiting schools tomorrow just to see it in action. I'll be putting some stuff up on Twitter, so I'm going to plug my own Twitter, Daniel underscore Novak underscore W. You know I was going to do that, right? To try and get some more people seeing the things that are going on and active in our schools every day. I have a brief video, about a minute and 40 seconds, just to give you a little highlight of the program.
My name- Hi, everyone. My name is Monita Bell, and I am the coordinator of Mix It Up at Lunch Day here at Teaching Tolerance. I'm very excited to be with you today. Thanks for tuning in. We're going to spend just a minute talking about Mix It Up and all the many, many reasons why it has such a positive impact in so many schools. First of all, students have told us there are a few key areas in school where segregation and bullying are the worst, and unfortunately, the cafeteria is one of them. So Mix can help the cafeteria be a safer and more inclusive place, which hopefully can spread to other parts of the school as well. Also, the Teaching Tolerance community tells us socioeconomic status, appearance, and race are the biggest social dividers in their schools. And we know from behavioral research that positive interactions can help reduce these types of prejudices. So we know mixing it up works, from our research and from the feedback we get from schools. So it's worth the effort. It really is. And finally, Mix It Up is just fun, and the fun factor has no limit. We hear about school-wide flash mobs, and block parties, and DJs, and parades, and I think that's why we had over 6,000 schools and 3 million students participate last year. That's a lot of awesome conversations and friendships being made and a lot of fun being had. Next week, we'll talk more about getting the most out of your mix event, but in the meantime, we hope you'll register at mixitup.org. And be sure to keep us posted on your planning via Twitter and Facebook, so we can share your great ideas, too. Until next time, thanks for watching.
So as you can see, our students are going to be involved in the national program. It's getting bigger and more popular each year. Another component going on in our schools connected a little bit with lunch recess time. A number of schools have something in place called buddy benches, and one of the goals that we're going to have with our social workers is to put the buddy bench process in place throughout the district and all our elementary schools. And really, I guess the idea's been around for a while, but when I was at a, I was at an assembly at McEpin, first or second, first week of school, their speaker, who was talking about character and building character in tolerance, and he, you know, sort of connected to the idea that students should have that mentality of nobody, no one plays alone in our school. And that's really the premise behind adding things like Mix It Up at Lunch Day and buddy benches, is that if someone's feeling left out, they can go to that spot, and students are going to be trained and taught how to handle if a student's feeling left out and is, goes able to, goes over to use the buddy bench. Shifting gears a little bit, and I don't know how I'm going to be able to pull it off effectively, so I'm just going to do it. And I want to talk about Park now. So from Buddy Bench to Park. Mr. Rashika and I visited with, we saw Barry Eulixson a few weeks ago, who was from the State Department of Education, and she gave us a little snapshot of what the score reports are going to look like. I'm just providing a brief update tonight. We don't have a lot of information to share this evening. I just want to give you some updates in regard to some overall specifics that have changed in regard to the testing and a very general timeframe of the expectation of results. As you know, it's an assessment, new assessment, I don't need to go on all that. The most important part on this slide is about the changes this year. The test is going to be shorter overall by about 90 minutes. We have one consolidated testing window, which I think is one of the biggest changes that they've made to the, made to the testing, is that now, as you can see in the last bullet, it comes after 90% of the school year has been completed, which is, which is great in comparison to even NJASK. We always had it a little bit earlier in the school year. One of the things that we have heard about throughout the, you know, looking at Park and hearing some feedback, is that students didn't get a chance to cover, cover some of the material that they, that they were able to see. This gives us a little bit more time to get those students prepared for the, for the assessment. So shorter, shorter amount of testing, shorter window of time, shorter, less impact on the school day, and I think that's, that's important. You know, a room like this would end up being, you know, literally shut down for Park testing because the students will be over there on the computer. So now we have a bigger window of, of teaching time than we did with last year's assessment.
So shorter by 90 minutes overall. How much time was spent on the Park test? And I take that 90 minutes overall is for both language arts and mathematics?
Yeah, it's just about a little language statement.
So how many hours were they last year? What do we expect time-wise to be this year?
Well, so the average, there's three, there's three parts to the test, and the average range of each component is about between 85 to 110 minutes. So the total of that, four, four and a half hours, roughly. And again, the average-
Was that last year for?
No, no, that's, that's this year. That's this year, over the course of that week, that the students will be testing.
We were about six hours last year. That's where that 90 minutes comes in.
One more question. I have, the tests, when I say 90 minutes, have they stopped testing on things that kids haven't been taught yet? Or?
Well, I, I'm just, I don't, I don't know what's going to be, be implemented on the test. One of the things I'm going to share at the end is a new resource for parents about understanding your scores, and that'll give you a little bit of, you know, a little foresight into what could be on the test. I think with anything, even with NJASK, you know, I administered NJASK as a teacher for 10 years, and it changed, you know, over, it evolved. I would imagine with the, the impact that Park had around the state and some of the percentage of refusal rates, et cetera, that they're probably looking at the test very closely, and I think Barry Eulixson shared that with us at the meeting, that there will be revisions and the test will, test will evolve.
Okay. Thank you.
The next slide is just, again, a brief overview of just some deadlines. We did have, I don't know if you saw on the cover of the paper, that the statewide scores were released, and that doesn't give us any specific data for, you know, our district, our schools, our factor group, anything like that. It was a general release of state scores at this point in time. What we can expect is that in early November, we are going to have our district scores released to us, and following from that, in December is really where we're going to be able to share that, that information out. So expect at a December board meeting to have myself and the newly hired district testing coordinator, Dr. Prichet, be here to present our scores at the December meeting, and then at that time, we'll also be able to send home the student, student score records through the mail. The other, I have the parent resource, I'm just going to pull that up real quick. All right, so UnderstandingTheScore.org, it's a, it is released by Park, so if, you know, take it, take it for what it's worth. But what you can see on it is this, this very important part about understanding the score. You can get a picture of what a sample score is going to look like. It's going to give you information in regard to your students' ranking in the school, district, state, and nation, as well as a student growth percentile for that student to show how they progressed from one year to the next. This year, obviously, first year of Park, students aren't going to have that growth percentile. That'll be on their report for, for next year. Also to note, every student, whether they participated in the assessment or not, is going to receive one of these reports. The ones that are, the students who didn't participate are going to receive a mock template so that parents can see this is the information that you would have had access to had your students participated in the, in the assessment. One part I wanted to highlight- This section here, Be a Learning Hero, Skill Builder. This gives you the opportunity to, coming back to your question, Mr. Foodie, about what, what could possibly be on it, this allows you to pull up samples. So I'm just going to put in some basic local information. So by typing in grade, content, and subject, and state, you're able to pull up information about, you know, samples for that, that particular strand or that content that you could be looking for. This will help you get an idea of what could be on it. This could give you an idea of how, if you want to have somebody practice for some of these things. The thing I found interesting going through this website is so many samples, especially in mathematics, relate back to what the district is already using in our iExcel program that we've spoken, spoken a lot about as far as preparing. So a lot of the samples that come out of it, come out of a structure that we've already been using for, for a few years. So I was, I was excited to see that. This website is already, it's already on a banner on our website, so people will have access to it. Once Dr. Prichet is in place, starting tomorrow, we're going to be working on getting a lot more of our information posted, so if anyone has any questions, they can go to our parent resources page, they can contact us, they can get all the, all the information that they need in regard to the test, as far as we know it. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Novak. Just a little piece with the Park. Barry Eulixson, actually, is the Assistant Commissioner of Education in New Jersey, so she's been very involved with this. She's a master of data and collecting lots of information and getting it out there. But we have noticed over the past few weeks that there's an abundance of information that's coming out, not only for educators but for parents as well. One of the things I found a little surprising is when we were looking on your left, there was scores at the top. Well, the numbers have changed a little bit, but there's not only, we used to look at the areas of doesn't reach or doesn't meet proficiency, has reached proficiency, or exceeds. They now have two levels for exceed proficiency. I'm not quite sure what the difference in the scores are, but that's something new. I, you know, I don't know if we really got close. Yeah, on that website, we'll explain that to you. So there are some new things that we have to look at. And again, you know, those parents who, I believe, even if the student took one part of the test, the first part, not the second test, then I think you would get a mock-up for both areas, because once you refuse to take the second part after taking the first part, it was kind of eliminated. They, they took it and just moved it out of the, I'll call it the bucket, sometimes they refer to it in the bucket, but it wasn't in there. So that's just to be aware of. Moving on in a different direction, I have two more things that I'd like to, actually three more things. First of all, we did hear Mr. Novak reference the National School of Character again, and congratulations again to Ms. Reinhold, her, along with Mr. Novak and Mr. Citro from McEpin School, went to Atlanta, Georgia to be recognized. That was two weekends ago? Well, last weekend, just last weekend. And so they were there for the entire weekend. It was a wonderful program for recognition and also coming back with some new information. So thanks again. We appreciate that. Okay?
Thank you.
And I could say also that I saw that Mr. Polaro from the high school is also now heading up a group with the high school teachers and faculty that are interested in working in the same direction. So there is lots of discussion going on at the high school and actually reviewing the application and going through the completion process to see where that leads us. So that's good stuff. Also, at the high school, I did meet with Mr. Gorski, our, our SAC coordinator, Ms. Garrish, and also with a couple of other people who are interested in the area of drug and alcohol and our testing. One of the things I really want to get clarification on is many people think that, when we talk about random drug testing, that it's on a voluntary basis. It's not voluntary, okay? Voluntary, I can explain to you that voluntary basis would mean that a parent would call the school up and say, "Listen, I have some concern about my son or my daughter. Can you help me?" And then we would go through a process with the student and the parent for a voluntary test. That's to help them out. That's fine. The random piece is for those students who belong to athletics, belong to clubs, parking on school grounds, and so forth. It's generated by computer, the students are called down, and, and that's how the test takes place. And then there is the suspicion base, where if somebody notices that someone looks like they might be under the influence of anything, they would be tested as well. And that's off school grounds. That takes place at their own doctor's office, if they like, or we can send them to someplace that we do recommend, and, and then we move ahead from there. But with that in mind, you know, we do know that New Jersey seems to be the big gateway to drugs, and it's a concern for everybody, and, you know, it's a concern for us here in West Milford. It's a concern for anybody in Ringwood, every place. But right now, we've got to be concerned about our own community, and certainly, we want to know what's happening. The, you pick up the newspaper every day, you read about somebody dying from a heroin overdose, and it used to be that it was people, young adults, late twenties, early thirties. We're seeing it with 15 and 16-year-olds now, and it can be in some of the most affluent communities and in, you know, other places that you would, you know, just wouldn't believe that this is going on. It's happening, so we have to be real about it. So with that in mind, in order to help our students- So with that in mind, in order to help our students, one of the plans where we are working on currently is working closer with new beginnings. What we've had is a number of students who have gone through testing twice, three times, just not receiving help. And they need help. This is not something you can fight on your own, it's an addiction. So we decided that what we're going to try to do is work closely with new beginnings. They will volunteer some work for those students who cannot afford it. There are some parents who can't afford it. We also deal with parents who don't want to admit that there's a problem, and then you have parents who are just too tired to take their child to counseling sessions to help them. So New Life Recovery will help us with that. As you know, New Life is based out of our Hillcrest building, so it's close. And in some cases, what we will do is student will go there for the counseling component and also part of the educational component that's blended into it, and then come back to the high school, or they can leave the high school actually to go there. So we're really trying to help these kids and make that work. A second piece of this is that, based on this random policy, we do want to utilize what we have in the school. So my suggestion is that, you know, looking at the number of obligations that school nurses have today, along with concussion testing and everything else that's happening, is that we bring in a nurse once a month from a service to take care of the students in the school, and our school nurse can spend a day just doing, going straight through the random process and try to identify students who have problems. This is not meant to be punitive. This is a method for us to try to help those students who have issues. Again, this is a problem that's all around us. The way to combat is find out who has the problem, fix the problem. We're not the authorities, we don't, you know, we're not with the police department, we can't arrest anybody, so we need to help these kids. And so we need to address what's going on in the community, in the schools, and we need to support the parents and the students that are having these problems. So hopefully, that will work and certainly help in giving these kids the help that they need. We know firsthand that we dealt with a student last year, that this is the kind of thing that we did for him, and he ended up graduating, and that's what we want to see. We want to see them graduate and have a future. And last but not least, that's spoken about in the past at least once, is I did want to have, in September or October, some type of forum for us to sit down and talk, and so I can get an idea to listen to some parents and their concerns about what's going on in the school. So the last two months have been extremely busy, between roof leaking and negotiation meetings and all kinds of things that are happening, but certainly, I do want to move ahead, so I'm looking in November, what I'd like to do is I'll call it a superintendent's forum. I'm going to invite, the first group will be parents from the middle school and high school, in a formal but informal, kind of relaxed atmosphere. Will now be a board meeting, it'll be a meeting with maybe one or two board members can join us, and Mr. Novak and some other people on a panel, and we can sit down and listen to some of the concerns from parents, and we can share with you what we're trying to do to address some of the issues, and hopefully have an open dialogue so that we can work together. That's the bottom line. I'm not going to be here for a lot longer, I think I'll be done in June, so, but it is something I'd like to put in place so that my predecessor perhaps can continue along that way. But that is one of the things that I see in this community that needs to happen. There seems to be too many references to negative things, we want to build upon the positive, and anything that is a problem, we want to fix. So again, I'm looking at the two dates of November 18th and 19th. There will be, I promise, a Honeywell invitation at least two weeks in advance, and we'll post something on the website as well. And I'm sure, what's that?
Liz is bringing snacks.
Liz is bringing snacks. That's the only way I'm going to show up, you have to feed me. All right? So keep your eyes open for that, we'll make an announcement then, okay? And that's enough from me, and I think from Mr. Novak, so let's continue now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to special reports and correspondence. This is Francisco.
Yes, we have revised minutes from the meeting of June 23rd. We also found another revision that needed to be made. I just put that correction in front of all the board members, and it's highlighted on the second page. Under item 36, there was an additional no vote by Mrs. Schultz. So that revision should be also included going forward. And we also have the minutes from September 15th and September 21st for your review and consideration.
Thank you. So I need a motion to approve the following minutes with the revisions listed.
I make a motion to approve the following minutes that are listed in special reports and correspondence.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Special report.
No votes.
Thank you. I would just like to mention that a special celebration of excellence luncheon and awards program will be taking place on November 6th at the Atlantic City Convention Center to honor the innovation and creativity of this year's HIP grant recipients. Please join me in congratulating these exceptional educators, Colleen Weiss-Magazick, Stephen Beatty, Ryan Herschapp, Mary Kennedy, Leonard Van Wingerton, and Ian White for the project Boxes for Birds, Bats, and Bees. So that will take place at the teachers convention down in Atlantic City. And now I'd like to move on to petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of thirty minutes, and then time permitting, other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the thirty-minute period transpires. Petitioners speaking during petitions and requests are asked to address topics listed for special action in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Would anybody like to come up and speak? Yes, sir.
Excuse me if I don't have enough copies for everyone?
Can you please state your name, spell your last name?
My name is Edwin Gonzalez. Hillside Lane, West Milford.
Thank you.
I will use this one. So as you can tell, can I just pass in, as you can tell, I just passed in a copy of the regular workshop meeting for July 26, 2005. I have done some additional research regarding this board, and it's alarming to discover that this board does not uphold its own policies. Furthermore, this adds to the issue of being able to trust this board.
Yeah.
In a board resolution dated July 26, 2005, this board adopted the following-
Excuse me, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
The first part of petitions and requests have some, need to deal with the agenda that's in front of us this evening, so if you would like to speak about this, you would have to do so in the second portion of petitions and requests where it doesn't relate to this agenda tonight?
All right, I would gladly do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Would anybody else like to come up and speak? Yes.
I want to say a couple of things with regard to the superintendent's report that he just gave. Over the last few months, I have attended state meetings along with two members of the township council, who are also members of the Township Health Advisory Board. These meetings were on drugs and what the various towns in the state of New Jersey have been doing. And what was striking was that West Milford's not doing anything much, although we have a serious drug problem. When the Health Advisory Board has had meetings over the last few months, the drug problem, particularly heroin coming into our town, has been at the top of the list of problems. So I'd be interested in knowing what plans the school board and the schools might have, particularly, shockingly, the middle school. We did a survey a year ago and saw from parents and students that the kids are into hard drugs, starting even at age 10, 12. We really should be doing something as a township, the school board, the council. Both you guys and the council might want to interact to think about what we might be doing as a township to reduce a very serious drug problem, particularly heroin, that we have in this town. As a recently retired member of the psychology and neuroscience faculties at NYU, we know, you guys know, that in terms of psychology and neuroscience, it's a serious problem for the development of teenagers' brains. We don't want to see problems here in this township. So I hope that you guys will have a continuing discussion and perhaps appoint a couple of people on your board to meet with the township council, particularly Ada Eric and Marilyn Lichtenberg, who are both on the council and on the Township Health Advisory Board, have been going with me to the state meetings, and we're both very disappointed to see that no members of the school board ever attend these meetings, although there are always members from school boards throughout the state. So I hope that you guys can be a little more active, proactive in dealing with the drug problems in our township. Thank you.
Thank you. That's one of the things that I have discussed, is trying to identify those, and I, you know, I strongly believe, based, again, on my past experience, that there should be an alliance between some school board members, doesn't have to be many, you can have some faculty involved, council members, but, and also the police department. I know in my past of working with Ringwood and Monique, the Aware Council for Drug Alcohol Use was very, very strong, but they did meet, yes, yes. So that would be nice to see something like that happen here, but I think people have to spend the time to sit down and talk to each other, which is hopefully someplace we can get to in the near future. Okay? You're welcome.
I'd like to mention that on November 10th, the Mawa Municipal Alliance is having a town meeting at the Sheridan Crossroads, and the discussion is on the rising epidemic in Bergen County on prescription drug and heroin use. And I think that it is open to the public, and you can go on their website, MawaAlliance.org, and register for that very informative meeting. And until West Milford has an alliance like that, I don't think it hurts to go to any of these other type of workshops or meetings with regard to these discussions. Would anybody, Mr. Novak?
I just want to talk a little bit about what we've been doing with character education. And I've seen that as, you know, recently I spoke with a reporter who was asking us about bullying in the schools, and my answer to the bullying question in the same vein with the drug problem is, how do we build character from an early age so that students are strong in themselves, self-confidence, able to stand up to those pressures as they grow? One of the things that I did in Atlanta, when we were at the school National Forum for Character Education, every workshop I attended was geared toward high schools, national high schools of character. And one of the common themes of many of those schools who began to pursue national recognition or a character-building process was that they were a very similar town to West Milford. And Mary and I, we spoke a lot about, I mean, there was these kids from Pryor, Oklahoma, who were amazing, and I'll keep talking about them anywhere I go. It was a very similar dynamic to what we have here in West Milford. Rural town, big town, smaller population, a lot of that, don't know what to do on the weekend kind of discussion from the kids. The underlying drug current discussion was something that these kids talked about. And they began their character process about five years ago. This year was the first time they received that national recognition, and they had graph after graph of how drug arrests, random drug testing, all of those things that we're talking about declined. They saw a decline in those types of things, they also saw an increase in academic achievement. There's a lot of research that connects character education to academic achievement, as well as the, you know, that, again, that building of self-confidence and helping grow students and individuals in that way. So I think that, you know, your comments are valid, but we are on that track. And how we're really pursuing character education throughout our schools is, you know, what I see is a necessity to put a backdrop, you know, in our kids to really, you know, foster their growth and give them that self-confidence to stand up to that pressure as they go. And, you know, working with other organizations, I just came from, prior to this, I'm part of the community advisory panel with Marilyn Lichtenberg at the Highlands Family Success Center. And, you know, bringing that organization in and connecting what we do in the schools to a centrally, central organization like that in our town, I think can only help those things grow. So in that panel tonight, we spoke about, you know, everything from transportation in town to drugs, to, you know, things that are really important to us as West Milford citizens. And I think that was, you know, the power of that group in that meeting. So, you know, coming back to what Mr. Rashika said about getting ourselves involved in those town organizations, that's only going to help.
Thank you. I was at that meeting.
Would anybody else like to come up and speak?
I'd just like to say that there's, I'd be remiss if I didn't share these photos, that Mr. McFarlane, the reporter, is from Marshall Hill, just if you want to take a look at them later before we break. Again, it's with New Jersey State Elks Association Drug Awareness and Peer Leadership, working with elementary school students, so these are here to share.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented with the carry, handcarries that were attached.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed along with the handcarries.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Kepi, would you mind moving education, please?
Okay. Under education, we have 11 items. I'd like to move numbers one through 11.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Foodie?
Number four. Are those, Barbara and Mr. Rashika, are those students coming into our district?
Yes.
That's tuition we're collecting from, whether it's a shelter or from other towns that are sending students here.
And are some of it, the state is paying?
Yes.
Some of it Patterson, Jersey City Hackensack?
Mm-hmm.
But we're really looking at the numbers of what it costs us to educate a child, we're falling a little short with these numbers?
You know, it's driven by state numbers, and, you know, that's unfortunately where it's at, but it is still revenues, and I don't know what else we could, you know, I don't think we can come up with a number and say it has to be exactly.
Basically, the budget kind of drives what the tuition is. So you have two different things that you're looking at. Your annual budget, plus you have your certified tuitions from a prior year, because the state certifies your tuitions after your audit. So we try to come up with a number that's reasonable. Some of these students might only be here for a 30- or 60-day period, they might not be here for an entire year. And if you, once you have a certified tuition, if it turns out that after our next audit, the tuition that we charge was not what was certified, then we have to either collect additional tuitions or we have to refund additional money if we charge too much. So we try to bring it in line with the prior year's tuition so that we know where we're going.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Dever?
One, for a quick question.
Mr. Foodie?
I don't want to get myself in trouble. I don't want to get myself in trouble. Number three, for the band trip, and I guess, Mr. Green, you're going to have to answer this question. My daughter's going on that trip. Should I abstain from this vote?
No, you don't have to abstain.
Because we're paying for her costs, correct? Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please. Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes, at the advice of council.
Mrs. Kepi?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Item number 12, we'll come back to after executive session. And if we could go to Personnel, Student Affairs, as Mrs. O'Brien is ill this evening. Mr. Dever, would you mind moving those items?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'd like to move items under Personnel, Student Affairs, items one through three, five through 32.
Just to remind, the four is now the hand carry, and we have, I pulled number six, so we take number six out of that. Okay?
Again, I'd like to move to items one through three, items five, and item seven through 32.
Need a second? Any discussion? Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepi?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number four under Personnel, Student Affairs.
The hand carry one, yeah.
Hand carry, sorry, the elder hand carry.
Need a second? Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Drew?
Yes. Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepi?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Dever. Budget and Finance, Mr. Drew, would you mind moving those items?
I don't know what I have to do with these. I'll start with one if I can. I'd like to make that one.
Any discussion?
Go ahead, you go first, Jamie.
We're talking about $42,500. We have a breakout of that money.
Everyone should have a copy of that.
I have an issue with that because I believe that we're going to be spending a tremendous amount of money on something we're not even sure we're going to get this money back on.
I don't know.
Get this money back. We're not even sure we're going to get this money back. We're going to spend $42,000 on an analysis. And then after the analysis, we're going to make a decision on whether we want to put solar panels on the roof. Other people told me that they're confident that we'll get this money back. If we're so confident, then let the, let's leverage the architect and let them put that money out first, and we'll pay them back. But right now, what we're doing is we're going to put out a lot of money to make a decision. And I just, I feel the $42,000 is going to be used elsewhere in our budget.
Mr. Foodie?
I would actually, after reading this, I'm glad that Ms. Francisco was able to get the breakdown for us. But I, before we go ahead with electrical analysis and propose schematic layout and design, I think that we should be really voting tonight to do a roof load structural analysis. Because if the structural analysis turns out that we can't do anything near what we would like to do, or maybe not even at all, spending money on an electrical analysis and propose schematic layout and design, it's a mute point. So what I'd like to do is amend this to the amount of $20,000 to prepare structural analysis. And then if that structural analysis is feasible and we can move forward with a solar project, I would like to then move forward with a solar project. So if anybody's in agreement with me, they can.
Okay. I have a concern, two concerns.
Yeah, that's a motion to amend.
Yes.
I don't know how you could put a limit on what you would want to pay for the structural analysis. And it's my understanding that the structural analysis is part of this, based upon the drawings, the plans of the buildings that are going to be reviewed, and their own firsthand look at the structures. So the structural analysis is part of this also. But I would suggest that I have to go back to Mr. Semenbrino to see if a $20,000 figure could, in fact, give you what you're looking for. So perhaps you'd want to table this resolution until the next board meeting. We can get more information, we can share it at the Budget and Finance Committee in November, and then we could bring it back on November 16th for the board to reconsider it.
Excuse me, one minute. Mrs. Kepi?
I just, I agree, I think we should table this. I feel like I don't have enough information on it yet. I feel like I haven't absorbed everything on it yet, and that everything is not there. And I would like that information before we move forward with this. And before we assume that $20,000 can be just put down, as opposed to the whole thing. So I would really like to table this.
Mr. Foodie, you're going by the list, right?
No, I can't make a question. We've got to log you off.
The itemized list here, that's where you got that figure from.
Yes, because on his itemized list, he, I mean, he already gave us the breakdown of what each thing is going to cost. And that's why I made that motion to amend to $20,000, just for structural analysis. Because if we go, he gets through the structural analysis and turns out we can't do it, everything else is, it's a foregone conclusion at that point. We're not going to be able to do it.
So there's a motion to amend, and a second on the floor now.
Which is what we're discussing.
Okay.
I guess my recommendation would be, if we were to pass this amendment, that basically we go back to Semenbrino and say that we've authorized $20,000 for the roof analysis and find out, you know, can he do it for that? And if we, you know, if he says yes, and the $20,000 covers that, and we pass, then we come back and we do the remainder. So we're going to do it in two pieces, or we don't just.
But if he can't do that, then when are we going to discuss this again?
That's what I'm saying. So why don't we?
Next meeting.
I think we ought to table it.
What would be better, just to table it, and then ask him what, if that, number two, is something that we can do separately, and then just move it ahead that way.
Oh, good.
Instead of going with an amend, you know, instead of amending it and...
Table it, get the information, have a discussion?
Or approve the $20,000 and see if he'll take it. If he doesn't, then we have the discussion in here.
Why don't you want to?
Well, it has to be. You can, if you make a motion to table, then can we second every vote on that? That's not.
There was a motion, okay, so we're on the amended motion.
I'd like to make a motion to table. Second.
And with that, further discussion? Our next meeting?
At the next meeting, when we have, when we have our question-answer guarding.
Okay.
We're going to discuss this motion?
Yes, any discussion on this motion? Mr. Dever?
I'm going to go as far as to say, it's a great idea, Mr. Foodie, add about the $20,000 to buy it up. I'm going to bet dollars and donuts that the architect is not going to go for that. He's going to want the full $42,000 for his money and time, we'll see.
Which is why I kind of like saying to him, this is what we've authorized. We didn't authorize the $42,000.
Mr. Foodie?
He's broken this down, Marilyn, if you've looked at it, he's broken it down to the electrical analysis and schematic, he's got it down to structural analysis, roof review, courtesy planning board submittal, meetings with the solar PPA companies, I mean, he's broken it down step by step by step. So the only thing, and I don't think it's an issue at this point, I could be mistaken, for that $20,000, looking at this proposal, we have to give more structural plans of those four buildings. When I was up on the roofs with our supervisor of operations, Mr. Sanvi, he had all but the drawings at McApin, and he was getting them put together. So...
Are you questioning if they were found?
No, I'm not questioning if they're found. I'm pretty sure, if he was able to find all the other ones, and he didn't think it was going to be an issue either. But if we don't have plans, then it goes on hourly rates.
An hourly rate, correct.
So, you know, we know that it could be a little more given...
Right.
A visual inspection at McApin, if that's the case. Because we have all the plans for Westbrook, we have it for Marshall Hill, we have it for the high school. So, I mean, I think the numbers, he was the one who came up with them, so...
Okay, Mrs. Kepi?
What I'm hearing is, I think the numbers, I'm not sure, if we have questions like that, we're just asking for one more meeting, simply just to have those answers before we even authorize $20,000. So I think we should do our due diligence and speak to him, and just simply do this next meeting. What are we really hurting by putting it off and getting our questions answered? That's what we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you. Mr. Dever?
I just want one more comment.
Sure.
Want to commend Mr. Foodie for his fiscal responsibility, but in the breakdown at the bottom, it says the fixed fees from the scope of work as listed above is $42,500. The guy wants his $42,500.
Which will be reimbursed to the school district by the successful PPA contractor upon PPA contract execution.
Is that a guarantee or no?
That's another question, right?
Again, tons of questions. I think we just need a little more time to get the answers. So we're all very clear on it.
We all just got this, so, Mr. Foodie?
Barbara, we would have to have an answer relatively quickly in order for this to be done in a manner which makes it feasible for the PPA company to make this admissible, because the solar credits are so far being phased out next year.
Right, and the other concern is that if you do have a bad weather early on in December, it's going to be harder for them to get up on the roof to assess things. But we do have a meeting in two and a half weeks, so fingers crossed we won't have any problems. And, you know, if the board chooses to go ahead with it, then...
My only...
Sorry, Mr. Drew?
My only thought is that these are his numbers. You know, we can try it. If he says no, we're, and whether we do it or not, we still get our questions answered. And so we can always come back and look at this as a whole. But it frankly gives you more authority and leverage to talk to him. This is authorized, we can do this right now, and, but we also want these questions answered. And then frankly, that'll be one of the questions that's answered at the next meeting. Will you take this in two parts? I think it should be two parts.
Mr. Dever?
Well, it should be, we don't know whether we will.
My question is, will the board be apprised the information? If we approve $20,000, when are we going to find out whether he accepts that or not? We authorized $20,000. And to go back to him, you're going to have to ask him, hey, if we only approved 20 out of the 42, would you still like the job? And he's going to either say yes or no.
Well...
Mr. Foodie?
You could say $20,000 to provide the structural analysis, because, you know, and explain to, explain to him why, I would, I would guess that...
You guys, Mrs. Kepi?
You're talking about two weeks. Let's just get our answers in two weeks. I don't understand why, what's wrong with waiting for two weeks?
There's a problem with negotiating by committee.
Mr. Foodie?
Get your answers, get your answers before you move on.
Marilyn, this will be my, this will be my final comment on this matter. I think we should move forward with the $20,000. Barbara, I'm sure will get an answer tomorrow, if she calls in whether that's okay or not. And the process can be started, instead of us waiting two weeks. If we have to wait two weeks till our next meeting, we're going to wait till two weeks for the next meeting, till we can discuss this. But if we vote on it tonight and say, they have agreed to give $20,000 to do the structural analysis, and the rest of the money will be coming, if everything else, if the structural analysis falls in line, then we're not delaying ourselves two weeks.
But don't we have questions?
All right.
In addition to spending that $20,000, I have questions.
All the question on the table?
Technically, it's actually a motion to postpone to the next meeting.
Okay, but it was the table, so, but you're right.
That's the essence of what the rule of matter.
Okay, so we're going to...
The vote is on the motion to postpone to the next meeting.
Roll call, please. Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Can you come back to me last?
Mr. Drew?
No.
Mr. Foodie?
No.
Mrs. Kepi?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes. Let's postpone.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, so we postpone to the 16th.
Maybe what we could do is, let's get our questions together, that one of which being the first $20,000, along with others, and maybe we could email them to Barbara, or email them to me. I'll email them to Barbara so that he can answer them, unless you want him here.
Yeah, I mean, my only question is the $20,000. That, I mean, that's it. But my, the other thing I'd like to point out, this has been on, in our possession since February, and we're just discussing it now.
The breakdown?
No, the proposal.
We just got this tonight.
The proposal.
Yeah.
And we should have probably discussed this a long time ago, so these questions should have been...
It was discussed a number of times over the last few months.
But not into the... Not with this in front of us.
Because it was discussed with the intent of preparing for a roof referendum. And that was something that we needed to find out if the board was in favor of. So it was discussed a couple of times.
Oh, in committee, I remember.
In committee.
At a board meeting when he was here.
Yep. But we didn't have this.
I agree. Mr. Dever?
Can Barbara still propose to the company? I mean, this has been shot down at this point, but she can still approach him and say, this is how the board feels, let's do that.
Sure she can.
So we're done with item one on the budget?
Yeah.
Can't find it?
Yes.
I'd like to move items two and three.
Need a second? Second.
Second.
Mrs. Kepi and Mr. Foodie, discussion. Roll call, please. Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepi?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
I'd like to move item four, Budget and Finance.
I'd like to move item four, the budget and final.
Need a second? Discussion?
Regarding comprehensive maintenance plan, yes.
Mr. Drew?
I'm concerned that this is the maintenance plan that has been in place for the last several years, and that it doesn't really seem to be comprehensive enough to have identified some of the problems that we had with the boilers and so...
It has nothing to do with capital. It's only maintenance. There's two different things. The roof replacement, the boilers, that's a capital outlay. That's not included in your maintenance plan. This is required by law. Your long-range facility plan includes your capital projects, but this is annual maintenance to keep your plant going, your alarm systems, your HVAC systems, your windows, your doors, whatever inspections need to be done. That's what this addresses, and it's required by the state because we have to spend X number of dollars on our facilities. But it has absolutely nothing to do with the capital outlay projects that we have.
I know not with the project, but... So, the maintenance would not include inspections of roofs and boilers and anything that was a capital expenditure?
Sure. Yeah, if you had a maintenance plan on your roofs, like, we would have maintenance done on the roofs after they're replaced, we would have an annual maintenance done. But this identifies all of the monies that we spend annually on the required maintenance areas as outlined by the state. So, the form that describes the different building systems is state-approved. That's where it is. We can't add or delete anything, because that's the way the state, that's the format that the state wants it in.
Okay. Thank you for answering my question. It just seemed to me that somehow we didn't identify facilities problems that we now that we have to make a budget. Given that this is something that we have to do as is with the state, that you've answered my question.
Right, this is recorded every year in the annual budget, I mean, in the annual audit, and it, as I said earlier, the long-range facility plan, which at this point, we update that as we go along. Every time we have a project, our long-range facility plan is updated, but that basically identifies the five-year, ten-year capital projects that need to be addressed so that we can get the bigger items done.
So, do we have a separate?
There's a separate, there's a separate long-range facility plan that is going to have to be updated, but the state hasn't provided us with the software or the format as of yet, so we're still looking at the one that was approved in two thousand and five, and the items that were addressed at that point. Any other? Mr. Foodie?
I understand what Steve's getting at, and knowing that if we had, I mean, this is a comprehensive, it tells us what we're gonna do, but it's the same as the last three-year plan we submitted, and...
It's the form that's required by the state.
It's the form that's required by the state, I understand that. But I think that we should have our own comprehensive maintenance plan besides what we do to the state, so that, you know, for an example, we had the roofs patched at the auditorium June, July, somewhere around there?
Over the summer, yes.
Over the summer. And in that short amount of time, when I was back up on the roofs last week looking at them, I found more damage. So, it seems to me that there should be a comprehensive maintenance plan for each building, where whether it's the head custodian or a maintenance guy will come and walk up on a roof, see if there's anything visually happening that needs to be repaired before it becomes a major issue. Those are the types of things that I, if I'm not mistaken, Steve, I think that's what you're trying to get at, and it, I mean, it might've been something that we would've caught this deck that wraps around the back of Westbrook a little sooner. Those, I think that's what he's getting at, and I tend to agree that if you don't see it, you're gonna, it's gonna be too late. By the time it happens, it's gonna cost us a lot more money.
Dr. Ober, when Dr. Ober was principal here, she had, you know, her concerns about the balcony, and we had a structural analysis done at that time, and they said it's absolutely fine. And now, it's not a structural issue, the structure at this point is fine. It's a cosmetic thing, and we're also hoping to preserve the integrity of the railings by taking care of the cosmetic aspects. So, it's been a process. In the five years that I've been here, there have been a lot of things that needed to be addressed. You can't do everything at once, and what I've been attempting to do is a little out of time. So, we're at the point now where we see that this needs to be taken care of to eliminate any future deterioration. So, I like to try to be proactive. Sometimes you can't always be proactive, but I think we're at the point now where if we wait any longer to address that, we're gonna be reactive.
Yeah.
Where we're still trying to be proactive, and we're trying to budget it so that we can do part of it now to get it taken care of before the winter, and part of it in the spring when there's nobody in the building with the sandblasting and painting. So, there's a lot of, this building is used a lot, especially during the summer, so we have a short window. August is basically our window for doing any major maintenance in this building. So, I'm trying to balance everything as best I could, and that's the reason why, you know, sometimes comprehensive maintenance doesn't, it looks different from your eyes than it does from my eyes, because there's a lot of other things that I have to consider also. So...
I'm not saying anything against you, Barbara.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying.
But what I'm, I think what Steve's getting at is that if we're very proactive, then we'll never have to be reactive. Except in an instance with the roofs, you know, something like that. But if we're on top of things a little bit better, I think that in the long run will...
I think that we've been trying to do that over the last few years, and there's, when the rod grants came up a few years ago, I was proactive about getting the architect and the engineer on board and saying, let's grab these things, they're the most obvious areas. We know that we have to replace the boilers because we're trying to be more energy efficient. Let's get the grants in, because we only had a four-week window. There wasn't a lot of time to sit around and say, hmm, what can we do to get some state money? So, I think that we've tried to address a number of things, and that's one of the reasons why we're trying to do the referendum for the roofs, because that does provide us with some debt service aid, so that the taxpayers don't have to pick up the entire amount of money on their own. We will get some monies back from the state. So, we're trying to be cognizant of the many things that need to be addressed without impacting the educational dollars, and trying to make things as good as possible, you know, for everybody concerned, and...
I didn't mean to make a long thing about this, but I...
That's fine.
You know, it seems like we're about to catch up on maintenance and repair that should've been done.
And there's always gonna be other things that we don't think of that are gonna show up.
Sometimes when you do preventative maintenance, change your oil as possible off a lot less than replacing your engine.
That's for sure.
And sometimes when you change the oil and you take really good care of things, they still break down, which is what we have to deal with in our bus depot. So, you know, we try to be proactive, but sometimes even the best intentions...
I think, I think we're looking at, what we're looking at here is basically, this is what the document is that we're voting on. I think we need to look at our own internal audit as to what's going on.
Right.
I think it's two separate issues.
Yes.
But you have to understand that this is something that's in place, that we need to move on. But again, let's take our own, you know, we go through a statement of assurance that I was talking about before. That is an opportunity to go through all the buildings and do a report on those, so I think that's the best way to handle it.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Keppe?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Let me just move all the items, I don't have any questions.
Numbers?
Five, six, eight, nine, and eleven.
Five through eleven?
Five, six, eight, nine, and eleven.
Need a second?
Well, now, wait a minute. You can move five, six, and eight, and then eleven is a separate, nine is a separate already. So, you can move five, six, and eight, Steve.
Okay.
Second.
The separate roll call.
The others are very separate.
Where are we going? Five, six, and eight? And you're...
Did you second? Second. So, we're holding seven, is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
Discussion? Mr. Foodie?
When we do these school bus evacuation drills, statute requires that we do it at the next board meeting, and Highlander Academy and Westbrook, we had a meeting on the twentieth, the evening of the twentieth. Nineteen, so Highlander and Westbrook, we should've already approved those drills. All the others fall after that date, and would that be done at this meeting? So, I know I've brought this up several times in the past, but...
We met on the nineteenth, was it last Monday? Last Tuesday?
Last Tuesday, which was the twentieth.
But I didn't have, I don't have the written report back from, I can't report on something I don't have. That's, you have to wait for them to...
Understood, but if they're doing a report, I mean, God, they're done in the morning.
The drill is done, but the actual written report is not done that day.
We don't receive it.
Yeah, we don't get it that fast.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Keppe?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number seven.
Second.
Discussion?
Regarding disposition of obsolete technical equipment.
Mr. Foodie?
I know I brought this up in the past, and actually had a discussion with Steve about this.
And I think you also had a discussion with Hebars, who told you what he does with the technology equipment.
Yep. We spoke briefly, we didn't go into any long discussions, but we did speak about this. And I know that we don't see any value, and that's where our recommendation deemed to be of no value to the district, and there was a list, there was probably a dozen or so laptops, there was a bunch of printers, and so on and so forth. And in the past, I've said that we should see if we can give this to a student, needy student in the district, doesn't have a computer at home. I gotta believe that there are a few of them out there that don't have it, but, and I think the idea would be not to give it to a student, but let the student use it for whatever, IXL math at home, any of the things that need to be done online as far as homework goes, and by keeping it, I mean, if it breaks, so what? But I don't want to give the kid a computer, and then he goes Patterson and sells it for twenty bucks or something like that, you know?
I think, I think what, some of the problems with that is the, you have to watch, of course, the operating system probably is not compatible with some of the software, so you'd be giving out something that they can't use, and I know one of the other things that we discussed was giving some of these computers to, what's the organization you were just at? And they're high in family success, because they're running a tutoring program, so we thought perhaps we can just share some of the, you know, share, but actually give it to them so they can use it if they just needed to get online for some kind of support for students with that, so...
Mrs. Keppe, did you have a question?
No, I was just gonna say, this is obsolete technology, it clearly states it there, and last time we discussed this, this was, we were talking about DOS machines and older, majorly older technology, and I thought it was agreed upon in the last time that we spoke, that this, what is usable was donated.
Thank you.
And considering it says obsolete, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Can Mr. Eltayid answer this?
Do you mind if we put you on the spot, Mr. Eltayid?
It's all right.
Thank you.
Should I go with this thing?
Thank you very much.
Hello? Okay. Okay, so, prior to my coming here, we had a turnaround of computers, which was about one school per year. What that meant was, at any given time, the oldest computers in the district were about eight years old or more. And that's kind of what we're looking at with the equipment that we're getting rid of. Every year, we're trying to, we've switched, since I've been here, to two schools of computers per year, to move to the state recommended turnaround time for computers of four to five years. But we're talking about computers that are anywhere from seven to ten years old. A lot of these computers are scrapped for parts, so the parts, you know, the computers that are not fully complete. We've pulled things out of these computers to be reused for other computers that could possibly break down. And then, in the cases where there are potentially whole computers, they're either so antiquated that it's not even worth pulling the parts out of, or the amount of time it would be required for us to go through a cleaning process and making them so that they are functional and available to the students would be kind of time prohibitive for the number of technicians that we have to service the entire district. So, we have four technicians that are managing about eight schools, and we've, in the past five years, almost tripled the amount of devices that we have in district. With the computers that we're getting rid of, you know, every time you release a computer to the public, you have to ensure that any and all information that was on that computer is cleared off. There's also concerns, of course, that if we are releasing computers that have Windows XP, we are technically releasing devices that are insecure to students, that, you know, their use could be of a potential danger to them because of the lack of support that XP now receives. None of these computers would be successful at running Windows Seven, and that's kind of the brawler that we've been using for our disposal. Now, what we are doing with the computers, or what the recommendation I put forward is, there is a company called Computers for Kids. It's, or it's either managed by or owned by Upcycle, which recycles computers across the state of New Jersey. They also refurbish and donate parts, you know, so the things like the printers and projectors and stuff that would be cost prohibitive for us to fix, they can fix in bulk. So, they either fix and repair those items and provide them to other schools in need, or the salvage that they make from it goes towards the charity of providing for equipment that they have for schools. It's one of the options that I put forward for what we would do. So, we're now just disposing of them. So, they are going to children somewhere to an extent, but I don't think that they would be very salvageable for West Milford students. That being said, moving forward, as we get into a period where I am finally reaching that four- to five-year turnaround on computers, then we can potentially see an area where we're relieving ourselves of a five-year-old computer, or a four-year-old, you know, or just expiring four-year-old computer, and at that time, we might have the potential of releasing those computers out to the populace. But until then, it would probably be a bad idea.
So, these are compact laptops with XP? That's what we're getting rid of?
There's, I don't have the list in front of me, but a majority, some of the items that are on this list... Um, there's, I don't have the list in front of me, but a majority, some of the, the, the items that are on this list were the list, were the items that were already approved for disposal. We just had to consolidate all of them to one location. A majority of them are either desktops or laptops that are
Absolutely.
very archaic. They, um, you know, nothing, I mean, if, at, at the very most, I would say, some have like Windows Vista on it, but probably not running those well. Um, and even Windows Vista doesn't support, uh, a device that's set up for Windows Vista doesn't necessarily support Windows Vista.
Thank you, Mr. El Taib. Mr. Drew?
Uh, I don't wanna get into a long technical issue.
Do you have any questions for Mr. El Taib?
Uh, no, I think I kind of understand. There are a lot of laptops and computers.
Okay.
Obsolete to us doesn't necessarily mean obsolete. I've got customers, major bank names you would recognize that are running this kind of crap completely successfully and, and not replacing it. Uh, I am certain that an XP Pro machine, they're still being used by corporations and machines even older than that. Um, you know, worst case, Linux on the thing, it formats the drive, you don't have any, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I would like to at least offer them for free to any student in the district who's reduced price lunch. Um, you know, as we continue to, uh, adopt, uh, technology in the district, we want kids to be able to use computers in the home and access the internet, and that's going to be a problem for us, but some families don't have those. And this might be, uh, a, a solution to that. It's not worth anything to us, but, but I know it could be worth something to somebody, so we at least offer it. If they don't want it, they, they don't get it. Anybody else, we sell them for, I don't know, 40 bucks or something.
We're not bringing in all the other time-consuming issues that we just discussed and explained to us.
Uh, you know how to install Linux on a machine, right?
We can install Linux on a machine, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the person that we provide the computer to will be able to operate Linux.
Right.
Also, there, I mean, knowing how to install Linux and ensuring that a computer that has potentially been scrapped for parts or put aside just because it was malfunctioning, um, the overhead on time that it takes to go through that process of clearing them out, installing Linux and things like that, it's kind of, it, it, it does, it does, there is a lot of overhead, which is feasible. It's something that we could potentially do, but in order to do so, that we would have to expand our technological offers in order to provide time for technicians to be able to work on something like, of that, of that nature.
I'm sort of proposing, say, say it's available and see if anybody wants them. You know, if you only get one or two or none, then, okay, we're done with that. If we get, you know, 30 families who want one, might be worth it to us instead of finding some other way for them to...
Mr. Dever?
Can we call a vote for number seven?
Is there a calling question?
No, I just wanted to...
Yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. El Taib.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
No.
Mr. Foodie?
No.
Mrs. Keppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Four, two. Does, it doesn't need a majority, does it?
Simple majority. Majority goes for it.
Mr. Dever?
I'd like to make a motion to extend the executive session till 9:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Dever.
Can I move items eight and nine, or do you have questions about either of those?
You already did eight, so...
You did eight.
Okay.
I think you wanna just do nine now?
Yeah.
I need a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Keppi?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
No.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
I'd like to move item 10.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Foodie?
Um, I see that we're, one of the many transfers this, this month, um, is for a laptop for our Director of Education. And I saw the price tag on it at $1,700 and kinda got a little sticker shock, so to speak. What kind of laptop is it that...
I do, it's a, it's a MacBook.
Okay.
I'm engaged, one of the projects I'm working on now is a, um, pride video for the town of West Milford. Um, highlighting a lot of our programs, a lot of our sports teams, uh, students in the classroom AP programs, that sort of thing. Uh, one of the things we see at board meetings and, and out in the community is we don't necessarily always have that, um, positive view of our town.
Say no more. I just, I, I, when I saw it, I figured...
And I'll plug Mac. I can't do it on, I can't do it on Google. It's iMovie, and that's what I make it on. And if you can, you can follow me on Twitter and you can see my previous work and my videos and, good stuff.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I have a question about the $321,000 for, um...
Wireless.
Wireless. And, and I guess my, you know, I know we are trying to do greater technology adoption in the district. I think that's great as one, and my only question is, was this, was this budgeted or not?
Let, let me explain. During the budget process, Mr. El Taib had received, um, proposals, and our discussion was we would put it in the budget, and if we received the E-Rate funding to offset the cost of the wireless upgrade, then we would proceed with the project. We have received the wa, the Level Two funding, and that was outlined in the, in the description. But we have to pay for it. We have to do the purchase order for the entire amount, and then we get rebates from the federal government to offset the costs, and that will get added back in.
Go back into the other account?
Yes.
All right.
On the accounts that we're taking it from.
Mr. Foodie?
What's those, what are those amounts, Barbara? Do you have any ideas? Is it, is it a percentage like we do with the, with the bonding issue, for example?
We're, well, it's federal, federal funds, and we're eligible for 50%.
Oh, okay.
But they've also capped each individual school. So there might be some areas in the individual school where they said that, you know, we're not gonna get funding, but it's such a miniscule amount, I think it came to about, what, 20-something thousand dollars that we're not eligible for?
Much less.
Yeah. So the bulk of it, of about $430,000, we're eligible for up to 50% funding. So, um, it's a...
No question we need to operate.
That was a surprise. That was a good one.
But it was really good, and as a matter of fact, last week, I, I saw somebody, uh, that deals with E-Rate funding, and they said that there's more to come, so. It's, it's a good way of upgrading our wireless because four years ago, we didn't have any?
Yeah.
We had no wireless. And now we're, we're expanding it. So it'll bring us a little bit closer to having that one-to-one environment that you're trying to achieve. Again, a little bit at a time. It's gotta be incremental because you just don't have the money to put out, and things have to be prioritized. We needed the Chromebooks for parks, so we couldn't do other things. So now it seems like it's all coming to fruition.
Oh, it's a great thing to do.
Any other discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Um, Mrs. Keppi?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie? Mrs. Schultz? I need to ask Mr. Green. Five, and one of Stain.
Technically, you have a problem with the passage of the chair.
Mm-hmm. Mike, please.
I don't think I...
Can you please repeat your...
You're allowed to change your vote if we don't.
Yeah, it, I can't call for a revote on that, right? It has to be...
Well, you could, you could also offer to ask the secretary to change your vote.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll do it this time.
What?
Change my vote.
Two.
Well, oh, yeah, 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 not to no, to yes.
We don't wanna delay implementation.
Thank you.
No, I know, that's...
Motion?
I thought we had more people.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Drew, would you like to move items 11 or 12?
Uh, I'll move item 11, please.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
It's the water.
Sorry. We just said 11, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Keppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
I'd like to move item 12, and we answered my question about...
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Foodie?
Barbara, in, in reading through the, um, the Board Secretary's report, um, we have stuff that, money that we have in capital reserve, we have money in maintenance reserve.
Right.
But there was a, a line item that I saw. It said, "Emergency reserve, zero."
Right, we don't have any money in emergency reserve.
Okay. My, my, my question, my question being, would you consider the money that we're, the budgeted fund balance that we're allowed to keep, um, that 1% that we're allowed to have as a, or 2%, it's 2%? That's right, you're right, 2%. Excuse me.
We're allowed to keep 2%.
2% as a budgeted fund balance above what we have is a surplus.
Excess, yes.
Could we take that budgeted fund balance and put it into emergency reserve?
No. The budgeted fund balance has to, you're required by law to keep up to 2%, okay? You could take some of the excess sum, fund balance, and you could put it into emergency. And some of the bigger districts do have that. I was speaking to one district over the weekend, and they actually have about $10 million in the emergency fund.
Okay. Well, I wasn't thinking about putting that much in, but was wondering.
It'd take us a while to do that.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, but I, what I was wondering is, could we put in that budgeted, that 2% budgeted reserve?
No, you can't.
Into that emergency account?
No.
And then not tax it the following year?
No.
That's something that we can't do.
She just said we can't do that.
No, I'm just, I'm making perfectly clear.
And then you also have to understand that when you have those kind of accounts, they're restricted, uh, the withdrawals are restricted.
Okay, what is that?
So it would have to be, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's, it's definitely in the statute and code as to what would be an emergency where you could actually do the withdrawal.
Any other discussion?
Okay.
You know, the, the one thing about your 2% fund balance is it's, it's liquid. So if you do have some kind of a problem during the school year, um, and you have to transfer money in order to cover it, um, and then you get to the end of the school year and you don't have enough money to cover your budgeted expenses, you can then transfer money from your, your fund balance with
Into those accounts.
With commission, with, with the approval of the county.
Correct.
So that you can cover and you don't run into a deficit.
Mm-hmm.
So there's a reason why they have all of these different funds available to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Francisco. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Keppi?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
That ends Budget and Finance. Thank you, Mr. Drew. We could move on to special committees, liaison reports. Uh, Mr. Robbins is not here, so we'll move on to safety. Mr. Foodie?
No report.
Superintendent's roundtable. Mrs. Keppi?
Um, yeah, we, we met, uh, last week. Um, there's a lot discussed.
That was a long meeting.
It was a very long meeting. So, but I'm gonna take some, just three highlights here. They questioned, the parents questioned Westbrook School and why the roof was taking so long, and Mr. Rashik was very nice in explaining that it wasn't way past due, that it was only a few days, um, extra, and, um, we actually saved money by not completing the roof in the summer. Um, and I think that was important to get out to parents and let them know. Um, is, they had questions about, um, sorry, let me, signage. We needed signage for the fields. Um, any away team that comes up, there's very much confusion about where the fields are, and there was wondering if they could, um, put signs up. And the other thing was, we discussed kindergarten, that we no longer have kindergarten screening. And, um, the parents were looking to, because now what's happening is they feel that we are now putting some children in kindergarten that really aren't ready for it because we have disbanded the kindergarten screening program. And there was a question of whether that could be reinstated.
And a transition program too was connected to that.
And a transition program which was connected to that as well. Um, so there is an interest in, in to looking into that and figuring out if we can implement that again.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you, Mrs. Keppi. Mr. Foodie, New Jersey school boards?
Nothing.
Mr. Drew, legislative?
Uh, there's not a lot that bubbled up as, as being noteworthy, to, that I noticed.
Okay.
As an aside, I was, uh, asked by Defari Anderson to participate in the Vasey County Education Legislative Committee, and I have no idea whether that, I don't know what that means, um, but we'll, we'll see what happens. I may have some opportunity to request the park results and maybe even influence that process, but I have no idea at this point.
You're gonna contact him, then?
Well, we've been in contact. He asked me to...
He brought that up at that last meeting we had at the Brownstone. That he was gonna reach out.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you. Uh, technology oversight, Mrs. Keppi?
Um, nothing to report. We have a meeting next month scheduled, though.
Thank you. Uh, West Milford Education Foundation, Mrs. O'Brien is not here.
Can I just say something quickly on that?
Sure.
The grant process, um, ends tonight, so, and we've gotten quite a number of grants in, which is very exciting at this time, and we have a meeting tomorrow night.
Great. Thank you. Uh, township board of ed joint committee, nothing to report?
Uh, no.
The trophy?
Actually, uh, based on the comments that we heard tonight with, um, some of the drug issues we have, I'm gonna try and reach out to some of the, uh, some of the people on the township side and see if we could bring something together on that, so. Other than that, nothing else to report.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any old business? Mr. Foodie?
Um, the roofs at Westbrook. Um, walking up this evening, I still see that we're six to eight weeks away from getting the flashing, capping.
Um, the latest report is that the, the metal should be in this week. They're talking about possibly doing that this weekend.
Doing it this weekend.
So they may have to...
Okay, so they might finish it. Because I remember the last 10 minutes, what they knew was six to eight weeks.
Yeah, we got a surprise.
Okay.
Nice surprise. Any other old business?
Yeah. Another question. What, um, why didn't we do this, start this in the month of August? And what money did we save by doing it later?
Okay, well, one of the problems we had is that we're still running, uh, some of the ESY programs and the other programs here at this school, so it really wasn't safe to do it. Uh, financially, Barbara can give you a better idea.
You know, when we did the Marshall Hill roof, um, last year, we had requested a September start date also. And, um, the first time we went out to bid, it was over $200,000, maybe $300,000 more than what we had anticipated. So we went out to bid a second time, and we put alternates in.
Alternate dates?
Alternate, alternates are part of the bid process so that you have a scope of work, but you put alternates in, and if it...
Thank you.
If the base bid comes in low enough, then you could add to the scope of work.
Thank you.
And, um, the second time around, um, the prices were still high. So after two times, you can negotiate with the contractors to see if you can get a better price. And... So, if we had gone out in prime season, which would have been the end of June, beginning of July, it would have been substantially more. We did end up adding money to the budget. I think it was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the board had to approve over and above what we had originally budgeted for Marshall Hill Roof.
Who, who originally gave us the estimate for that roof?
We were using the square footage from reports that we had gotten back in 2011, and, um, it turned out to be a deficient number, so that, now we know that the roofs are actually bigger than, than what they, that was included in that original report.
Okay, any other discussion?
But it is less expensive.
So, we...
With the roof referendum, though, if we're successful in December, we plan on doing the roofs in the summer, because that's gonna be a very attractive project.
Yep. Yep.
Especially the two, because of the size, and the two buildings are next to each other, so the staging is gonna be easy, and, um, we should be very successful. If we're successful with the referendum, we should be very successful with the bid and coming within our budgeted amount.
So, but, you know, we're, we ended up spending more money, though, than we budgeted for the Westbrook Roof?
No.
No.
We spent...
Marshall Hill.
Marshall Hill.
See, everybody wants to get the work done during the summer.
How much, how much did we save on the Westbrook Roof?
Um, I... Let me see if I can...
I mean, you don't have to give me the exact number, but...
Well, let me see.
Somewhere close, I...
I'm looking.
Okay.
Let me see if I can give you a number.
Does that do the session? Any motion?
I'd like to make a motion to have executive session at nine forty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, any opposed? Just be on the safe side.
No, it's lumped together. I thought I could pull it out of the Board Secretaries' report, but the, it's not itemized.
Okay.
So, um...
Could you, if you could find out, maybe send me a quick note?
Sure, I'll send it out to the board. Any other old business? Anybody have new business? Mr. Dever?
Tonight, we discussed a lot about park testing. Um, we talked about revisions that are coming to the test, the test time, testing scores. We talked about the web workshops that are for parents, but it's curious how this district, and I don't wanna use the word discriminate, but we have no guidance in place for the families who don't want their kids, or want their kids to opt out of the test. I'm hoping tonight, during executive session, we could probably come up with some type of guidance for the parents who want their kids to be opted out of that test.
Anybody else with new business? Mr. Drew?
Uh, I would like to propose that we try to hold something like a public forum, maybe at the high school or one of our facilities with a large room, to answer any potential questions regarding the referendum with Thanksgiving between now and the election. Uh, I think if we don't do it here, we may not have that opportunity, but I really think it'd be good to have.
You're right, yeah.
You know, if people are available, a date certain that we can give to the newspapers, so anybody who might have questions about it can get their question.
Yeah, we planned on, on doing that.
So, I guess I'd like to make a motion to that regard, and I want somebody to follow up on it.
Second.
Discussion?
And not the night before Thanksgiving.
Do we have any dates, tentative dates?
Not at this point. We have to look at the calendar, because Mr. Rashik, Mr. Rashik is also including his Superintendent's Council Roundtable, you know, for the...
Well, unless, we can do it. You know, well, here's a thing, I mean, if I do mine early enough, we may be able to piggyback it. I mean, that's, that's a possibility.
Or go to the PTA, PTO meetings if it's there.
I'll be happy to attend that.
Yeah, okay. Just a thought, but that's not what we're prepared for tonight, okay?
So, who's going to follow up?
Barbara and I, I think, will, will sit down and look. We just wanna look at the, 'cause we have, November two is, parents going for conferences and things like that, so we've just gotta be careful. But we'll, we'll make it work.
And then we need to communicate that to the...
Sure.
And the board members, who they wanna attend. Any other new business?
Do you need to, do you need a vote on that?
I should have raised this as a point of argument.
You wanna vote on the...
Excuse me, I don't think we had a second for that.
Mr. Foodie did.
Okay.
Oh, we got a vote on it.
Yeah. So, isn't, it doesn't need to be a, it could be a voice vote.
Is everyone for coming up with a tentative date for the referendum discussion with the community? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Drew, you were...
No, that's fine, we need to defend...
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Francisco.
I should have raised this as a point of argument, we're at a time, but I guess now I'm gonna make it a question. I believe that we should adopt the agenda before the petitions and requests, if we're going to tell people that their petition doesn't pertain to the agenda. If there is no adopted agenda...
The agenda's presented in the format. The items are listed on the agenda.
I will say this, most boards of education, many do adopt, but most do not adopt the agenda technically.
So, the public is...
So, the agenda that goes out to the public is technically notice to the public of the agenda items. So, technically, you don't have to adopt it. I mean, you raise a good point, because if you're adopting the agenda, what's the point of having that resolution? But the bottom line is, the agenda that's put out there, although not technically official until adopted, is the notice to the public of what will be acted on, so certainly acts to restrict them to those items on the notice as it goes. It's not technically necessary.
I'm done.
Thank you. Any other new business?
Career Day next Tuesday at the high school, sponsored by Rotary. So, November third, there are a number of programs going on, so...
Mr. Rashik, if you don't mind, I just wanna mention that we also have our first Special Education Parent Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow night, which is the twenty-eighth, or, I'm sorry, it's on Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, at seven PM to eight-thirty, here at Westbrook School. So, all special education parents are welcome.
CPAC.
Yes, CPAC.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I need a motion to close, um, sorry, I'll move on to, sorry, petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes. Reach petitioner for a period of thirty minutes, and then, time permitting, other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the thirty-minute period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Would somebody like to come up and speak? Yes.
Edwin Gonzalez, seventeen Hillside Lane. I also would like to mention that the following opinions represent my personal opinions, and I am not representing any township committees. I have done some additional research regarding this board as a follow-up to some of my comments like last week. It is alarming to discover that this board does not uphold its own policies. Furthermore, this adds to the issue of being able to trust this board. In a board resolution dated July twenty-sixth, two thousand and five, this board adopted the following rules reviewed from the original copy which, a copy of it was provided to you this evening, and I quote, page seventeen and page eighteen. Specifically, gonna emphasize paragraph three and forward. Now therefore be resolved that effective immediately whenever the board excludes this public from its meetings, in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B, it shall make public versions of the minutes of those closed meetings redacted only to the extent necessary to protect the public interest. Available to the public no longer than six weeks thereafter, absence of contingent circumstances, and is further resolved that between three months from the effective date of this resolution, the board shall prepare for each closed meeting held since January one, two thousand. Public versions of the minutes of those meetings redacted only to the extent necessary to protect public interest as permitted by law. And is further resolved that for each element redacted, the public version of the closed meetings minutes shall include a statement setting forth as specifically as possible the reason for the redaction, and is further resolved that the board shall at least annually or more frequently, at the discretion of the board secretary, or at the request of a public citizen, determine whether and to the extent to which the public versions of outstanding closed session minutes, due to the passage of time or intervening events, can be updated to disclose previously redacted material. The outcome of such reviews being recorded in the board's public meeting minutes, and is further resolved that these public versions, properly updated as necessary of closed meeting minutes, shall be maintained in a book form, along with the board open session minutes in the board secretary's office in the West Milford Public Library, where they shall be readily made available for inspections by any person, and is further resolved that the instant resolution be and hereby is adopted as board policy and to be maintained to the board policy's manual. Based on my research in this item, I, I found that the last time any of the executive meeting minutes that were published in accordance to this resolution was February two thousand and eleven, which is the very last page of, of the copy I gave you. I also found that during the previous years, it hasn't been done consistently. Moreover, find that this policy is not listed under the current policies of the board as stated in the resolution. So, there's a change of policy? And if so, what is the current policy? After your current policies and bylaws that you post online does not show it, so I just give a lip service to the public. Earlier this year in March, during the Board of Education budget discussion, a board member made a statement regarding the tax increase and suggested that the capital improvement budget be left to the public in a vote, in which another member stated, "We cannot trust the voters with regards to have a bond proof." I cannot believe my ears when I heard these comments from a board member. Trust is something that people earn over time. Trust is earned by meeting and even exceeding the expectations of those giving their trust to you. We have given our trust to this board by electing you. However, this board has been secretive and misleading to the public in the past, and has shown time after time not to be trustworthy. In order for the people of this town to trust this board again, this board has to become more transparent and forthcoming.
Mr. Gonzalez, we're sorry, your five minutes is up, so, thank you for your comments. Please sit down.
I am, I'm almost down.
You only have five minutes, and your five minutes is up. Thank you.
Anybody?
Would anybody else like to come up and speak? Seeing none, I need a motion to close.
Actually, if there's nobody to speak, we got up to thirty minutes reserved for this, for the public portion, so I guess that automatically, I get the times from the other people donated to me.
Your five minutes is up, sir.
There's thirty minutes reserved, reserved for this portion. Therefore, and we're wasting time by arguing about this.
We have a board attorney here. I will defer that to our attorney.
Your five minutes is up, sir.
Sure, when those comments are unpleasant to the board...
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Would anybody else like to come up and speak during petitions and requests at this time? Seeing none, I need a motion to close, please.
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned at ten fifty-one. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming.